Okay, we'll call it to order this July the 31st, 2019 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer. Chair Howard.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
If you'd all stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you again for a beautiful day here in Franklin County. A little bit of rain, a little cooler, and we're grateful for that. I just pray to continue to be with those who are out there doing their business farming and all of that. Just protect them, watch over them as they get things done, as a crop squirrel. Help them to get some worth out of that after the rain that we've had lately. Continue to be with our county. We thank you for our commissioners and for their families and their lives and the things they do for us. Lord, continue to pray for our citizens as they look out for things around them. Help us to continue to have patience and watch over each other as we look for things that could be done, and as we look at the things that are done and are grateful for those. Continue to watch over those who watch over us, our fire departments, police, sheriff department, EMS, all those folks, folks down at dispatch. Thank you for all them looking over us, take care of us when we need it. And so, Lord, continue for that. Thank you for the fair that was here. A good time everybody had, the kids had, whether it were animals and things. We thank you for 4H and all the things the kids get to do. But, Lord, continue to watch over the county. Help our commissioners continue to use your guidance and wisdom as they make decisions for us as a county, as a people. And, Lord, we're grateful for all that you do for us. Thank you again for this day, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Scott. Anything on correspondence and organizational business? Okay. We have no one signed up for public comment. Takes us to the consent agenda. Items today that need considering and approve on the consent agenda are the minutes from July the 24th meeting. Payroll for the period of June the 21st, 2019 through July the 20th, 2019, in the amount And claim vouchers in the amount of $352,166.45. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motions are second.
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
This new computer here, we're figuring it out, guys, so. I got nothing doing. Okay. Takes us to items of business. The first item of business today would be to consider for approval the contract for commercial appraisal services for the 2020 valuation year. Jamie.
Well, this is just a, pretty much just a renewal of Gene's contract from last year. He did a very fine job taking care of our commercial appraisal for us this year. The only major change we had is that there's been a, we lowered the total cost from forty to thirty-five thousand based on his, as he saw the workload, and he was now familiar with the county as well as the record-keeping. And then we also changed some of the scheduling for the hearings at the end of the year because as we were going forward, the workflow and the scheduling was such that we just needed to change that at the end of the year. So, basically, it's pretty similar with last year's contract.
Provide a little bit more background, primarily for the public. We are entering into this contract because we don't have a deputy appraiser. So, historically, we've had an appraiser, a deputy appraiser. The market out there right now for deputy appraisers, for whatever reason, is just extremely thin. So, with the money that we would have been paying that position, we are able to enter into this contract. And while Jamie and I haven't necessarily talked about it as a long-term solution, we certainly are saving money this way because we're not paying benefits. I mean, it would take a heck of a lot more than thirty-five thousand dollars to pay for a deputy appraiser. And so, certainly, we still discuss that and think that it's a feasible option moving forward, but for the 2020 year, you know, our contractor's done a great job, and so...
And in many cases, the county has to just build their own to get one, rather than just to bring one on your staff. So, we're working on that, too.
Is there any more questions on this for Jamie?
Lester, did you spend the whole forty thousand? Because it says up to thirty-five, so it's not necessarily thirty-five. It could be less.
Yes, ma'am. It was on a schedule.
Okay.
Yes.
Not would look for a motion to approve the contract for commercial appraisal services for the 2020 evaluation year.
Oh, can you approve?
Motions are second.
Okay.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you, Jamie.
I got a question before we leave, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
We get a lot of email and stuff about Board of Tax Appeals on commercial properties. Where do you see that going for us? In favor of the counties versus in favor of the big businesses?
I, the only, the only way I see a final resolution coming here would be legislative of some kind or another to provide some solid definitions as far as value and how the process occurs. It's a, the issue at hand right now is the definition of what an open-market sale or what a comparable sale is versus using a sale that's not truly comparable for a property in its current state. I'm afraid it's just going to have to be laid down by the legislature at one time or another that this is how it's going.
And Roy to kind of supplement that answer. Right now, it seems to us that BOTA is slanted towards the big business. I mean, we're getting, we're getting hammered pretty good on our commercial appraisals. And as Jamie said, I think it is going to take legislative intervention to step in and, because right now, and this isn't just a Franklin County thing, it's not just a state of Kansas thing, it's happening all over the country. And I've sent you some literature via Jamie about the dark store theory, and that's what these companies are effectively using. And it's, it is harming local communities. We're fortunate in this community that we have such a strong residential tax base, but in communities where they rely upon their commercial tax base, I mean, they are really hurting right now. You know, Yandotte County is an example of a county that's, or a greater government. I don't know how they, I think their city and county are combined up there, but they're really hurting. And so, hopefully, the legislature will take some steps to figure that out.
I'm afraid that's the only final resolution at this point.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Take us to item number two. Consider approval of the revised Kansas Department of Correction Fiscal Year 2020 Behavioral Health Budget in the amount of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. Dustin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Browning with Community Corrections. This morning, we're seeking approval of our fiscal year 20 behavioral health grant budget. This is one of three grants that we receive from KDOC each year that funds our operation. Pardon. This one specifically funds our care coordination efforts, which include mental health, substance abuse, sex offender treatment, and our batter's intervention program. We originally requested a hundred and nine thousand dollars in funding from KDOC, and nearly thirty-four thousand dollars of that was denied, forcing us to revise this budget. So, this new budget will allow us to retain our onsite clinician that we have through the Elizabeth Layton Center, as well as some services as far as evaluations and therapy services. But those are the decisions that we had to make on what to cut and how to best allocate those remaining funds. So, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
What did we get last year on this?
I believe it was around that one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred thousand dollar range.
Did they tell you why they denied?
Overall, across districts, across the state of Kansas, folks asked for a total of three point five million dollars, and the state of Kansas only budgeted three million dollars for a behavioral health grant in fiscal year 20.
So, everybody probably took a cut.
Everybody's feeling it.
Questions? Not would look for a motion to approve the revised Kansas Department Corrections 2020 Behavioral Health Budget in the amount of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Motions are second.
Okay.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item number three. Consider elect a voting delegate and two alternate delegates for the 44th Annual Kansas Association of Counties Conference.
So, as you guys know, you select delegates every year for the KAC conference, and the, that conference is in November generally every year. And so, and then we will select K-Work delegates at a later time. The conference this year is November 12th, 13th, and 14th, and it is being held in Wichita this year. So, we need to select a delegate and two alternate delegates for this conference.
I haven't went to the last couple conferences, but kind of plan on going on to this one. I'd be willing to be one of the alternates in case I don't go. I don't want to be the main delegate, but...
Make a motion to approve. Mr. Howard, the voting delegate.
He wants to be the...
I'd rather, well...
He wants to be the...
I'd rather be the alternate. Is this the thing that you've done for several years, Roy?
He wants to be the alternate.
Oh, you alternate? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll do one of the alternate things. Roy's done this for several years now as our delegate, I believe.
I'll revise that to Roy Dunn. Sorry, my dad didn't hear you.
I was going to volunteer, but appreciate the confidence.
Would you like to do them all three at once?
That we can. We have Roy for the delegate. I'm going to do an alternate. Someone else want to volunteer for the other alternate?
I'll be there, so I could be an alternate.
Motion to approve that. Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
We can't all just stand and do it and pass it, would we?
Wouldn't know how to act if one of the other one of us showed up.
That's right.
He'd go ahead and put you down for K-Work, too, really.
I got a question on this, Cory.
To save some time, yeah.
I know the delegate in the, will have to vote on what is presented before them from the KAC and what they've lined out that they're going to ask for it through the legislature for the coming year. And that's basically what the delegate person, Rob Roberts is our representative on that board. I'm not sure if he's going off or if he's still on there. I know he's still on there. We might advise us to, before we go out to there, if our KAC representative could come to us and go through the list of things that they're expected for us to make a decision on when we go to Wichita. It's a thought, you know? Maybe there's nothing, several things I know from past history is the same old things they go after, but I mean, there's always seems to be a few, three or four big topics that come up every year, and it might be advisable. Find out if he's still. I know he was. I know he's up for reelection, but I don't know when that takes effect.
He's Miami County Commissioner.
Miami County, wrong.
Anything else on that? Okay. Takes us to item number four. Consider approving the solicitation of bids for the financing of the 2019 120-14 AWD motor grader. David?
Commissioners, recently, we agreed to purchase another motor grader. This puts financing in place for that so that we can spread out the cost of that over a period of time. As, as in years past, whenever we've, when the county has purchased motor graders, we've done this through financing over a four-year period, basically four equal payments spread out over that. And generally, we get a year, at least a year of use without a payment associated with it. Now that we have spread out, lengthened our lease terms, return of that equipment, we should get a couple of years with no payment. So, over the long haul, this should help us out. But we're here today to ask to be able to solicit those bids from the local banks. With your approval, we'll send those out to all the banks in town. I've had at least one bank, they're aware that we just purchased one, and they're ready to receive this.
Like David said, this is something we do every time we purchase one, so it seems to work the best doing it this way. Anything else, more questions on this? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for the financing of the 2019 120-14 AWD motor grader.
Motion to approve.
Motions are second.
Okay. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Okay. Item number five. Consider approving the purchase of two 2020 F-150 trucks from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of sixty-four thousand, nine, two dollars to replace two aging half-ton trucks.
Commissioners, since I've been here looking at equipment replacement lists and speaking with staff and looking at the equipment, one of the things that I was told early is how great the equipment is that we have. And so, we have been able, over the years, to keep our staff equipped with newer equipment. And in the process of doing that, we've identified two trucks that need to be replaced. One of them is the truck used by the solid waste superintendent. It is a 2003 model. It's got, the miles aren't significant on it, but it's starting to have some mechanical issues. There's transmission problems with it, and staff is afraid to take that truck anywhere. And so, we need to replace that. And then, the second truck is a 2009 half-truck, or half-ton truck. And the idea for that is to push that down into our fleet service in our road and bridge department. We have several significantly older trucks that are used by our sign tech, by our mowers, by other folks needing to get places in the county. And the idea is to transfer this 2009 truck, which is the truck that I use, down to a, basically to give it to the sign technician as their primary vehicle. And then, we would sell or auction the, both the 2003 truck and the 2009 truck, we would through Purple Wave, whatever avenues we elect to go through. That, in effect, elevates the quality of our entire fleet by having newer vehicles that staff are using on a regular basis.
I just have one question. The purchase from Shawnee Mission Ford, is this, why are we using Shawnee Mission Ford?
Well, we actually reached out to six different dealerships. I know it says five in there, but when I was reviewing my information this morning, I realized that I had left one out. And so, we reached out to six dealerships, both GM, Ford, and also, we reached out to the local Dodge dealership. Most of the folks responded. There were one or two dealerships that they don't participate in the government pricing. And so, you know, obviously, they didn't submit a price, but Shawnee Mission ended up with, ended up with this by a few hundred dollars, actually, right around three hundred. Beckman's down in Garnett, we reached out to them, and they provided quotes on their GM models, and it literally is three hundred dollars difference between the Ford and the GMC that they priced. And so, that is how Shawnee Mission ended up with it.
We talked about this before, Rick, but, so, government pricing obviously means there's a set low price on a vehicle, and now that'll be different between a Ford and a GM, but there's really, we can't do any better. But where places like Shawnee Mission Ford often set themselves apart is any additions that we need to make to the vehicles, they are big enough, and they have the partnerships and the economies of scale that it's so much cheaper for them to put the necessary equipment on, and that's where we really save money. I mean, we strive to keep everything local, but I, you know, it gets to the point where we just save appreciable money by using. So, we have used them a lot, and it's because they give us really, really solid pricing on everything.
Questions on, no questions on this?
Commissioners, this would be, both of these trucks would be funded out of the solid waste fund.
What was the status of that truck that got damaged on Idaho Road?
That's the next agenda item.
Right.
And we, another thing I would say, and frankly, we probably were, we can talk about it at a study session, we can send it to you. David, Janet, and I sat down, you don't even have to look at it if you don't want to, but David has put together a very comprehensive equipment replacement plan, and this is part of that plan and keeps us on a pretty good schedule, so.
Would look for a motion to approve the purchase of two 2020 F-150 trucks from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of sixty-four thousand and ninety-two dollars.
These are 2020 trucks, not 2019?
These trucks are 2020. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Motion that we have is for 2019. So, that's why he asked.
I said 2019? Oh, you got 20.
It right there is on the, on the...
It'd be 20.
Those should be 2020.
So, it is 2020, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Okay. Item number six. Consider approving the purchase of two 2019 F-250 trucks from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars. Fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars to replace two three-quarter-ton trucks recently involved in accidents.
Commissioners, just like the two half-ton trucks, we reached out to six dealerships. Again, Shawnee Mission Ford was the, provided the best pricing. Now, these trucks will replace the truck that was totaled on Idaho Road, and it will also replace the three-quarter-ton flatbed that was involved in an accident on 59 Highway when they were turning off of 59 to, onto Finney Road. A car tried to pass and struck the vehicle, causing it to be damaged. Now, that was a brand-new truck with less than three thousand miles on it. And so, we have insurance claims on both of those vehicles. The truck that was damaged on Idaho Road, we've got a figure of ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-three that we'll get back from insurance. The initial insurance claim on the 2019 truck is thirty-three thousand. So, theoretically, we should be getting a total of forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars back from insurance for these two vehicles, which will take most of the expense away from these purchases. The, and in the bids, or the pricing that we got back from Shawnee Mission Ford, the flatbed truck, actually, the cost to replace it this time, along with the, we'll have to buy the bed separately, so we'll get a truck and a chassis, that is less than thirty thousand dollars for those pieces. So, we actually come out ahead, and I think it's just a matter of timing with this purchase and the insurance, so I feel pretty good about that.
Now, this is not our insurance that's paying for that one, it's the other company, other person's insurance.
I'm not sure HR's been handling that part of it, but those are the initial numbers that were provided to me.
I would say, Commissioner Dickinson, that's kind of an insurance subrogation question. I suspect KCAM will likely write the check and then work through the other driver's insurance company to be reimbursed, so.
More questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of two 2019 F-250 trucks from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Approve.
Motions are second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Okay. Takes us to staff reports. Eric?
Yeah. I want to talk about the budget just a little bit. It is done. Janet and I have done our final review. Looks great. No appreciable changes from the budget that you saw. We have been discussing and would like a little bit of feedback from you, particularly you, Rick, and Roy. As you know, Janet and I don't give long budget presentations at our budget hearing. We keep it pretty simple. Our thought process being, you guys have sat through every single budget study session, you've seen the ins and outs of the budget. We'll offer to you that there haven't been any appreciable changes. If there have, you know about them. And so, we were likely just going to prepare a short presentation that highlights some of the, kind of the important points, some of the reserve transfers, other things, obviously emphasize the decreasing mill levy. Is there anything in particular that you would like to see from us outside of that?
I, personally, I don't see any reason to. I think it's went well in the past, and if anyone's here that has more questions on it, we answered if they have them.
If it's been working good in the last three or three years, there's no reason to, I don't see any reason to change it. Maybe after I go through one, then I'll see, but I ain't seen one for two or three years, but I hadn't heard anything, so ain't broke, don't, you know?
Don, or Don, Roy, what were your thoughts?
A lot of times in the past, it was very minimal attendance at the vegetarian, so I think, I like the way things are going now is best.
Actually, I was here last year, and there wasn't a lot of public comment anyway, so I think people, yeah, I think they're good.
Okay. If you haven't been down to the courthouse, the sidewalks finally got prepared, so we've got, I don't know, half a dozen or so new squares of concrete there on the, be the east side of the courthouse. A handful of events I want to bring to your attention tomorrow night, and I've emailed you on this, is a hospital rededication. Tomorrow night, and I've emailed you on this, is a hospital rededication event. Uh, certainly, um, hope that you all could be there. Basically, it's, it's an event to honor the history of Ransom Memorial, and it's my understanding that they're rededicating one of the buildings. And so given that technically it's a, a county hospital, um, I certainly plan on being there. Uh, August seventh is the, uh, healthcare and educator luncheon. Again, that's an event that we've historically had pretty good attendance at. Um, and then the twenty second of August, if you're interested, is Eggs and Issues. And I know Tammy sent all of you emails on those things, but just wanted, uh, to bring it back to your attention. And if we need to send, you know, reminders to you, I certainly, uh, we're happy to do that. Outside of that, that's all I have this morning.
And when, the date on our budget hearing?
It is the.
Week from today?
A week from today.
A six.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Sheriff?
I just wanted to highlight a couple of other additional events. Tomorrow night, in addition to the hospitals, uh, uh, thing that they've got going on, it's also National Night Out. And, uh, we will have staff out, um, going to various neighborhoods, um, throughout Ottawa, um, for that. And I believe you guys have been invited to participate in that as well. It's an opportunity for us to get out and engage with the community, um, in a more relaxed and informal, um, atmosphere. And, uh, it's been, we think it's been, uh, it's been pretty successful and they've added more neighborhoods, um, each year. So, uh, it is a, it is a pretty good program that's going on. Also, uh, lane fairs this weekend, and so the parade is Friday night. And then we'll have events down there Friday and Saturday, and, uh, we'll be out of, out of those as well, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thanks.
The other Dustin? Jamie? Thanks for being here, Melissa. David?
All right, Commissioners, uh, work continues on Idaho Road Bridge. Uh, they took us, uh, quite a long time to pump all the water out from underneath that, uh, that bridge. It, it, it's amazing, uh, how much water just stays under there. Uh, so we got that cleaned out, uh, and then yesterday they poured the, the concrete that, uh, uh, will fill the voids underneath the bridge. So that work is done, uh, they will get started on backfilling and compacting that, uh, that material here in the, in the coming days. Uh, we're probably still a few weeks, uh, out from having that completed and, and reopened. We do continue to work on it. Got, the folks have been working really hard. Uh, we have also been, uh, if anybody's driven, uh, old fifty the last few days, we've been working on the shoulders, kind of pulling those back together. Uh, we shut it down yesterday because it was creating a traffic hazard with all the dust, uh, that was in the air. Uh, but we'll, uh, they might even be working back on that again today since we have a little moisture.
They were, I came by them.
Were they?
I came by them this morning, yes.
Good, good. Well, I know that, that was, uh, uh, on the agenda, I just didn't know if they made it out there. Uh, Texas Road, that, that first mile there is completely done now. Yesterday, they were able to install the, uh, driveway tubes. I think there were four of them that they put in and, and got matched into the road. So, uh, we should be good on Texas Road. We'll add rock to it, uh, after a period of time, let the traffic, uh, uh, settle that, that road a little bit. But, uh, all indications are that it's in, uh, much, much better shape than it was before. And so the other thing that is kind of significant, you know, we've got rock in our ditches all over the county. We only have two backhoes, uh, both of those backhoes are out. Pulling that material, uh, back up onto the edge of the road so that we can either haul it off or utilize it, uh, where we need to. It's going to be a, a long, slow process, but we have started that, uh, and we'll continue working on it. The other thing, Pawnee, the Pawnee Road Bridge that was slated to start this week, it did get started. And, uh, I stopped out there yesterday and they're removing the, uh, the trees and whatnot in the construction limits, uh, so that they can then, you know, begin to work in earnest. So that's underway. We've got a ton of other things that we've been working on. The staff is, uh, again, uh, showing a lot of resolve and, and going, um, a hundred different directions to try to take care of the issues in the county. And I think that, um, if you've driven any of the roads, they're starting to, starting to look better. But we, again, have a, have a long ways to go there. That's really all I had. A couple of things I want to let you, uh, know that be coming before you. Uh, it's time for us to submit, submit, um, for the next round of bridges, bridge, bridge replacement projects. These that we'll be bringing before you are for the twenty twenty one, uh, construction season. And so, um, uh, I've got the applications that we've, we've put together and I'll be bringing those for your consideration. Uh, the other thing that, uh, I would like to get submitted is a, um, um, application for a lo- local, uh, road safety plan. And what that is, it's a, it's a national, um, effort being led by the, uh, Federal Highway Administration and administered, uh, locally by KDOT. Uh, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, if you will. Uh, we would be responsible for five thousand dollars of that. And what that is, uh, it, it allows us, uh, to identify, analyze and prioritize, uh, road safety improvements on our local roads. And so they're doing this all over the state. Uh, they've got, um, um, the money allocated, uh, for this year and next year. But I'm hoping to submit this application and get us in the twenty one or twenty two season to help us improve our roads. Um, it, it certainly is, is something that I think a lot about. You know, anything that we can do to, um, improve the safety of our roads is something that we should be looking at. Through this program, they will, the consultants that will come in will help us identify any signage, uh, any road improvement projects, that sort of thing, that will, uh, again, improve the safety of our, of our roads. So that, that's something that I'll, I'll be, be bringing before you in the coming weeks and be able to share more information about it.
Chip and seal, do you have, do you have a, any idea on date yet on that?
On what?
Chip and seal?
Mid to late August.
So you still have some time to prepare those roads?
Yes, and that's, that's, that is something else that, um, um, concerns us, is the timing. Uh, we, with limited manpower, uh, we are spread awfully thin right now, but, uh, it's a topic of conversation and, and we will, um, be probably working right ahead of the chip seal crew.
But you will make it a priority and you will get it done, because it needs to be done. The other thing is I was driving to, uh, anyway, on Jackson Road off of Vermont, and there was, uh, some large rock along the edge of the road. Is that there to, both, as, were we losing the side of the road there?
Yes.
And then so what is ultimately, what we, will, will we be doing more than what we've done, or?
Historically, what we have done whenever we've had those washouts is pull that material up back to the edge of the road and compact it. Through this, this process, uh, through FEMA and, and KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, we are looking at, um, long-term solutions. And so we've got a couple of things on the table that we're going to be looking at, uh, to try to mitigate that, because we know it's going to flood again. And these, these locations, it occurs time after time after time. And to me, that, that, it doesn't seem like good practice to keep doing the same things that we've always done and getting the same results. So we are, um, uh, looking at alternatives. In fact, uh, our bridge consultant has provided us a proposal to do a little bit of work, uh, associated with that. And we'll, we'll be moving ahead with that, I'm sure. And then it's a matter of, you know, uh, going through the bidding process and getting contractors to, uh, to come in and do the work.
Okay, it takes us, Commissioner comments and board reports?
Hadn't had a meeting till lately, I'll have several coming up, uh, on the Wellsville meeting this evening. Uh, but I will be attending the, uh, RTD conference on August eleventh and twelfth. I did, been working on a grant for statewide grant, and I had a phone call the other day. We're just finishing the dots on it, but we are going to get a twenty five thousand dollar grant for, uh, a statewide project. Uh, part of it, that's why I'm meeting with, uh, been working with Barbara Anderson from the State Commerce Department, and I've been working with, uh, Nancy Pritchard from Rural Development, and, uh, working with the state president of the Veterans Coalition. So hopefully we get that money and, uh, I'll meet with the rest of the state board in November and we'll be making decisions of what direction we're going to go with that project. I did meet with Nancy Pritchard the other day with our RTD deal grant we had with, uh, Project Seventeen. We're wrapping it up. Uh, she's with Rural Development, they had a rural development, and discussed our, uh, everything that we had gained from it over the last year and a half, and got their final seal approval. So hopefully we can apply again at further date. They were, seemed to be pretty happy with the way it turned out. I mainly thank Project Seventeen and Heather Morgan. Have somebody like that, that, uh, we didn't have to pay. She was, you know, part of the commerce part for Project Seventeen. And she's done a lot of those things for other people in the, in that seventeen county area. A lot of people don't realize it, you know, that she'll actually do a lot of those things, just do it. I mean, she gets paid through the State Commerce Department and then grants. She writes for those organizations too, so that's all I got.
On, um, Friday, I was at the Chamber Coffee for Crystal Anderson, who is the new director for the, uh, ECAN. And she's got a lot of enthusiasm, and we realize all the different, um, things that they have a hand in and the different people that they help, um, it's pretty incredible. Um, also, I signed seven neighborhood revitalization, um, applications last week, which is the second, I think, the second group, which is about how many we signed in May, and she said she's already got another big stack. And that is only a win-win for everybody, because, you know, some of these are just vacant lots that are, new houses getting built on them. And so when you have substantial improvements to a property, um, maybe not right away, but eventually all of those improvements will be back on our, our tax rolls. And the last thing is kind of a personal thing, my husband and I got to check out the emergency room at the new Advent Health over the weekend. And you know, when you think about rural communities that are losing their hospitals, um, and not only is our hospital here, it's down the road, um, it's healthy, and, uh, services are even, they're even adding services instead of reducing services. So I think we're pretty lucky to have what we have.
Uh, I went to the coffee, Chamber Coffee Friday, and not only they recognize, uh, Crystal Anderson, the new director, but also, uh, Scott Schultz, uh, Morning Star Homes, uh, achievement of being named, uh, Business of the Year for two thousand, I guess nineteen, wasn't it? Two thousand nineteen?
I think it was this year, yeah.
I haven't been anywhere else.
Uh, yesterday I attended a tourism board meeting. One of the main topics that was talked about was there are volunteers, they're losing volunteers. A lot of other organizations are losing volunteers. A lot of it is, um, some of them are getting older and having reasons that they can't attend anymore or do things. Another thing is a lot of different, uh, organizations are pulling out of the same, uh, pool of volunteers. Several of them are volunteering at several different places, it's kind of stretching them thin. So they discussed possibilities of, uh, looking for different avenues to get volunteers and, uh, possibly working with the school or whatever, and, and see if they, if some of the students could volunteer and do different things at the tourism. And that was one of the main topics. Another thing that, uh, is happening with the economy and so forth, that a lot of the people that are volunteering now are looking for jobs to, that pay. You know, they need some help, uh, with, uh, surviving, so they're going out there trying to find something that pays instead of, uh, just volunteering. So that's another thing that's making it tougher to, to keep volunteers. That was one of the main things we talked about at the tourism yesterday. Okay, uh, upcoming, uh, we have a study session on Monday, commission meeting on next Wednesday, and the budget hearing next Wednesday night at six o'clock.
Only, I don't know if the visitors, Senator tried it or even thought about it. I know, uh, the Tractor Club and the Car Club and several organizations has been used in the young professional. And, uh, they're more than willing, they've been helping with several different programs, I know, in Franklin County. And it might be a good, you know, place to check with. I mean, they're looking for things to do.
I will pass that on to Susan. Right, if there's nothing else, would look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
The motions are second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?